I have 7:02 and I see that we have a quorum. So I think I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole Public Hearing for the FY21 Budget. We have this meeting being recorded and broadcast. So, welcome to the Beverly School Committee Public Hearing for the FY21 Budget. It will be followed by a Committee of the Whole meeting. We thank you for being present this evening and bearing with us in this remote setting. Today is Thursday, March 28th, 2020. We are meeting virtually using a remote meeting application that has been provided at no cost to our district. BevCam is broadcasting on Channel 99 and on its YouTube channel, and I am recording this meeting locally to my computer as a backup. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order entitled, "Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, 30A, Section 20." This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and asks our body to use technical methods in order to allow public access. Tonight is a public hearing and there will be participation from the public. Joining us tonight are members of the school committee, invited guests, and various members of both the city and district leadership teams. I will conduct a full roll call and attendance in a moment for the record. As a preliminary matter, since this is the FY21 Budget Public Hearing, we will call members from the public to speak. We will do this after some brief remarks from our superintendent and possibly the city finance director. A list of those interested in speaking has been compiled by the committee's executive secretary. However, if there are additional members of the public who have not yet indicated their intention to speak, please identify yourself with the raised hand function in this meeting or email citizenconcerns@beverlyschools.org within the next few minutes to be added to the list of those who will be recognized. I would ask that we not use the chat function unless it relates to a technical issue only, such as the loss of sound. And I ask that you please endeavor to speak clearly into your microphone so that we have an adequate record. Also, please remember that any audio or video that you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record. As such, please use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. The chair will call on you to unmute when you are recognized. You will need to provide your name and address clearly for the record and that we ask that you limit your remarks to no more than three minutes and to stay on the topic of our FY21 Budget. Members, I would now like to conduct a roll call confirmation that you are both able to hear and see me and that we can also hear you. Please come off mute to affirm that, as I call your name, to affirm that you're able to do both. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Okay, I'm muting some of you because it seems like when someone's coming off mute, their speakers are actually rebroadcasting. So do be careful with that. Now, Mayor Mike Cahill, have you joined us? I see your name. Are you able to come off mute and communicate?
Yes, I have. Hi, Madam President.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Quelo, are you able to hear us and participate?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Mr. Malady?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson? Ms. Robinson, I see you but you're on mute right now. Are you able to communicate?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Okay. And I, Rachel Abel, I'm here. From our administrative and leadership team, we have Dr. Sutcharocheck.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Dorothy Flaherty?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Donna Bergeron?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Laura Harrison?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Recording Secretary. Ms. Jean Sherburne?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay. Mr. John Harmon, I'm not sure. Oh, there you are.
Here.
Awesome, great. Ms. Beth Splansky?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Christina Leo?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. Okay. And...
Mr. Khrushenkov?
I think your audio...
I think your audio is feeding through.
I'm here.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to mute you again. We'll try to limit our questions to Mr. Khrushenkov. Mr. Dan Keefe, are you with us this evening? I don't see his name. And, let's see, in terms of our administrators at the schools, I'm not sure I saw anyone confirm their participation this evening, so I won't call the roll there. But I do see Brian Ailes from the city. We also have... Thank you, Mr. Ailes. And two members of the public at this point. I see Mr. Mike Grazia and Ms. Karen Fogarty. Are there other members? Obviously, BevCam is also with us this evening. I don't think I see any other members who have joined this meeting as of now. We'll keep an eye on that. Mrs. Zigg, maybe you can help with that. Okay. Now that we've called the roll, I just want to say that the supporting materials for tonight's agenda were distributed to members via the email threads. And to the public, these materials were provided on the district website and will be included in the meeting record in a timely manner. And they will also be presented on the screen during our meeting. As a final reminder, any and all votes or actions taken this evening will be done by roll call vote and they will be called by the chair of the committee. So with that call to order, our first order of business this evening will actually be the pledge of allegiance. And if I could ask... Let's see if I can share my flag this time before we start. Okay. Let's ask Mr. Malady if he wouldn't mind leading us in the pledge.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Going back to our agenda quickly, our one and only item for this evening is our public hearing on the FY21 Budget. I will state for the record that a notice was published in the Salem News on May 21st, 2020, and that gave notice of how to join this meeting this evening. It's also been published in all the usual spots as part of our agenda with links, meeting ID, and passwords. We're going to start with some opening remarks from Dr. Cherocheck to give us a brief overview. It will be similar to the information that was presented last week in our meeting. And then we can proceed with some questions and then call on the public. So, Ms. Cherocheck, do you have an item you want to share? I'll stop sharing my screen.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Apparently, I have a lot of things open. I don't know what happened to all my things. I had them all queued up and ready to go, but here we go. I'm ready to go. Here we go. And we're in. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
All right. Awesome. So, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you information regarding our budget. I'm just going to try to move the pictures out of the way for myself. Thank you. And so, you know, like, as I did last weekend, like I will always try to do, whenever we talk about anything as important as the budget and how we're planning for our delivery of education to the students in Beverly, we always begin with our goals. I think it's very important to understand that our goals are what drive us in our decision-making and our budget should reflect our goal areas. And so, we hope that we've done that. We know we're facing some unique circumstances this year as we go forward. But just as a reminder, you know, the commitments that we've made in Beverly are to these goal areas, which include engaged learning, which is all about, for us, equity and how we are providing equal access for all of our students. We particularly looked in the area of equity to two areas, social-emotional learning and inclusive practices. We have a commitment to rigorous and consistent curriculum that has proven to be an area that has taken a lot of our attention in the last few months as we've transitioned to a remote learning platform and remote learning environment. We'll continue to look and work at that, especially as we enter into a new school year. Innovative practices are at the forefront in terms of how we engage our learners in authentic and innovative curriculum. It's really important. I think we don't want to let any obstacles get in our way of achieving the goals that we've set. And so, we hope that we're pivoting and adjusting to our new learning environment, but with these goals at the forefront of what we do. And then finally, school management practices are always key for what we do to make sure that we're efficiently and effectively utilizing the resources that we have and the resources that are available to us. So, as I...I'm just going to move in. I'd like to start off with, we always have three... Always try to consider what the factors are that impact our budgeting process. There are really three big drivers this year of the budget. One, we are in a negotiation year and we have contractual obligations that we have to consider as we go in. Our teachers, we value our teachers and we really want to make sure that we are doing our very best to make sure that's, you know, evident in every decision that we make. We have a significant fiscal and national health crisis that we're in the middle of, so that can't be underplayed. And we have to take a look at how we work through all of those. So, oh, and the final one is we have, unlike almost every district around us, we have increasing enrollments instead of decreasing enrollment. So that really is a different factor for us to think about as we go through. I have gone through with the majority of all of you these slides. Probably this is the fourth time any of you are seeing them. I'm going to go through them quickly. Please stop me if anyone has questions or at the end, ask me any questions about any of the particulars that I present. So, first of all, we have... We have our contractual obligations to consider. We are negotiating with the union. We have a very, very positive and strong relationship with our union and we want to continue that. It's largely because we have one of the greatest teaching forces and staff around and we're very proud of them and we're proud of the work we do with them. This is a year for them that's challenging, I think, for everyone in all that we've done. But as in any negotiations, we have contractual obligations that need to be considered when we create the budget. So, for us, our contractual obligations include, we look at what's the total sum of our salaries and in terms of COLA, what does each percentage represent? And this is really for you as a benchmark in your head as to what we mean when we have a certain percentage in mind. So, 1% of our salary obligations in Beverly is 443,310. 2% of that would be 886,620. So, that's just sort of for you to have in your mind what we're looking at as we move through negotiations. We also have a contractual obligation for steps and lanes. Those of you who are familiar with the contracts and collective bargaining are familiar. That means that the longer that a teacher teaches with us, they move down a step and the more credits they get in their higher ed, they move over in lanes. And so, our contractual obligations are estimated to be 514 for the steps and 180 for the lanes. And then finally, Mr. Ailes has shared with us a health increase at 1.5%, and we estimate that to be $227,000 in that general range. I mentioned that we have increasing enrollments that are something that we have to keep our eye on. In Beverly, we have grown over the past two budget cycles, from 1798 up to 1901, and that's in our elementary enrollments. You can see the numbers there. That's in the collective, all five elementary schools combined together. When we met last week, we were asked to talk more about what that looks like individually at the building levels in the budget book that I shared with you. Each school, as a cost center, had it broken down. But I wanted to take a minute, and I'm using Hannah as an example, to walk through what that chart means so that as you look at that budget book, you can understand what you see as you go along. So, this is an example of one of our elementary schools. Hannah, and at the beginning, there's a general description. We serve students grades K to 4. In particular, at Hannah, it's home to our district's grades 2 through 4 language-based program, which is a program designed for students with specific language-based learning disabilities. And down below on the chart, we show the projected enrollment. So, I circled a couple of areas, mostly because, and this will hold true in each one of the elementary schools as you look at it. If the school has a special education program where students are largely in a sub-separate setting, most of the day, it's broken out by inclusion. And at Hannah, that happens to be in grades 3 and 4, they're projected to have three students in grade 3 and three students in grade 4 in their language-based program. My guess is that they will also have some in grade 2, but we're not there yet in the process of... And the closure came in March, which may have interrupted the flow of some of those placement decisions for us as we went along. We then take a look. So, their general enrollment runs across this top row. That does not mean that there are no special education students incorporated in these numbers. These are students that are in sub-separate programs. The full...we work in a co-teaching model for full inclusion or in the best way that we can. And those students would be incorporated up here. We don't break those out separately. So then you have your student totals. These are the number of sections in each grade level that we anticipate at Hannah if we were to open in a regular brick-and-mortar setting. I'm going to say that a few times throughout the presentation because we're not quite sure what that's going to look like in September. And then finally, the class sizes are estimated, not on the inclusion model, but on the general education students that are expected. So, at Hannah, our general class sizes are estimated to be ranging between 19 and 22. Finally, at the bottom of the chart in each one of the elementary schools, we show what we are anticipating for the staffing levels for the FY21 Budget. Below it is where we were in the FY20 Budget. So, you can see that there were 3.5 kindergarten staff at Hannah last year. We're only anticipating three kindergarten staff at Hannah this year, which is a reduction of a .5 teacher. However, we anticipate four sections of first grade at Hannah, which is an increase of one section. So that's just a quick explanation as to how to utilize the chat over here. You'll see the total enrollment for the Hannah School is 342. This number 6 is the number of children that are in that... And it's here so that we can add the columns up. So, this is the total enrollment for Hannah is expected to be 342. And there is one asterisk, and I want to keep your attention on that. Our projected enrollment for kindergarten is not an actual enrollment today. That's our projected enrollment. As I mentioned earlier, we are running right about 340, 345 right now. We anticipate summer enrollments to bring us up to that 360, 366 mark, which is what we had projected in the beginning. And so, these numbers indicate filling all the seats at 360 when we hit the 360 mark. So, that's just what that says. So, and as you go through the budget book, you can look at each individual page. I have a slide further on that's going to talk about a couple of classes that we have collapsed and that we're keeping our eye on in enrollments. And I'll get to that when I get there. But I just wanted to give a general explanation as to how to read that budget book and how we were presenting the information. Our middle school enrollment is, as you see, also increased, up about 60 over the past two years. And those class sizes are depicted on the side. Our general enrollment numbers at middle school are very evenly spaced across all of our classes. And our general class size is expected to be somewhere around 25, 24 in some grades, 26 in others. But we're right around the 25 mark, which is where we pretty much have been since we opened the middle school. We will have some shifts in enrollment and I have those depicted in a future slide. And then finally, the area that we're really seeing the greatest increase that is impacting staffing is at the high school in that we are now hosting in grades 10 and 11, our largest classes. And that really does impact in the area of social studies, the offerings that we have, as well as we're looking to provide opportunities for more elective courses in technology and robotics and in business because we are really moving in the direction of the authentic learning. So, we had to add elective sections. So those are the areas that we're hoping to grow in, those two content areas. As you can see, district enrollment has increased from FY19 at 4468 to our projected enrollment of 4726 in the coming year. So, and these were actual numbers as of two weeks ago Friday. Mrs. Bergeron pulls them right off of Aspen. The way that our student information system works now, we're able to get right up to date, actual numbers. So, it works really well for us. Another other areas, our preschool is growing. We spend...we do child find services for students under the age of three. We work closely with early intervention, so we identify who is coming our way. We know that we're getting an influx of students. Remember, preschool is a two-year program, so we have some students who age out and some students who age in. We have a large group leaving our preschool this year. No, I'm sorry. We have not a large group leaving our preschool. A lot of them are staying and we have additional coming in that we already know about from EI. So, we anticipate to have enrollment of 135 in our preschool. That is an increase for us. And in particular, those 10 students, Ms. Splansky has indicated to me that their IEP needs are pretty significant and they would be requiring an intensive preschool program. So, we're looking at increasing our preschool programming. However, I do want you to note that our out-of-district programming is a significant decrease. And so, our increase in need for servicing at the preschool is in part a reflection of our ability to keep students in district. We're working really hard to create programming for students, to keep them in district. It's been a goal all along. We know that we're going to have some cost savings in the long run. We've benefited from a little bit across cost savings this year, but we don't want to...we want to make sure that if we bring them back, we support them the way we need to. So, some of the savings that we have has been actually reallocated to make sure that they're successful when we bring them back because we certainly don't want them coming back and going back out again. So, this is an enormously powerful and positive number for us... I'm sorry, I want to go back one more. To have decreased the number of students out of district at this time. That is a really positive statement to the efforts of our regular ed staff, our special education staff, and most importantly, to the real hard work of the Special Education Administration. And I'm really, really proud of them for that and it's very positive for us. So, finally, as I went through the enrollment numbers, I told you it's causing shifting and changes in staffing due to enrollment. This is the areas that we see. We will be increasing in our preschool. We need to for enrollment purposes by one intensive preschool teacher. We need to, if you remember that three...that number of 426 or something like that in first grade, which is outrageously large. I'm not...I think we're seeing a correction in kindergarten of back down to the 360, which is really good because I would be very surprised if we kept having, you know, 400 numbers in every grade level. But that's causing us to increase the staffing at both the Cove School and the Hannah School by a grade 1 teacher. We reviewed and in reviewing the enrollment areas and knowing that we were facing a very difficult budget season, we took a very close look at enrollments at several areas and we are watching classrooms for the enrollment sizes. But we were able to, I call it collapse. In 4th grade at the Air School, there were four 4th grades last year. There will be three 4th grades next year. Those enrollment numbers are hovering around 24. That's actually not unlike what they had this year with grade 4. So, that's not a big swing, but we were able to collapse one teacher. The same thing at Cove in grade 3. They have...were able to go from four sections of grade 3 to three sections of grade 3. Again, those enrollments are...we're watching them to make sure that they don't exceed. Hannah kindergarten was a decrease. The 400 kids went up to first grade, so we were able to decrease in the half-day kindergarten program that we had there. And at North Beverly, we were able to decrease in grade 1 from four sections to three sections. So, that...and again, we're watching the second grade at North Beverly. The numbers are running around 24 there as well. But, you know, we're keeping our eye on that right now. So, those are some decisions that we made around and based upon the enrollments. In the middle school, same thing. We had the very large class of 395 is now in 7th grade. So, you'll see grade 7 supports shifting up in a number of places. We were able to, at this point, decrease grade 5 by one position. If you remember, we had a three-person team in grade 5. So, we are not making specific decisions about which positions are moving yet as we're waiting to see what happens as we come into September. We're confident that, you know, this isn't going to cause anyone to not have a job if we're expecting them to come back. However, the shift of positions is being moved, as well as in grade 6, which had the 395, so they're down two positions. We're going to be increasing a grade 7 by one position to make up for the enrollment differences in grade 7, as well as increasing academic support in the grade 7 and 8 Success Academy program. I'm not sure if you remember, we added that program last year as a measure to really address students that were facing challenges with anxiety, that were returning from hospitalizations, that just required some supports to help keep them in school. It is not a special education program. It is a regular education program that we've designed to help support kids who are really, really struggling. And so, we had it staffed with a school adjustment counselor last year. Heather Mattilevich has been working in that program. We, as we watched and reflected on the program throughout the year, determined that it is absolutely making a positive impact, but we needed to provide some academic support in that program as well. So, to make sure that we can ease that transition back into the general classroom for students who are struggling. So, we're taking one of the positions and shifting it up there. We're increasing our learning center support. Again, that's an enrollment as we have the larger class shifting from grade 6 up to grade 7. And one of the other areas that we...because the class sizes and because where the classes have shifted, we've taken a look at our global apps and the way that we're running the global apps through the schedule and the schedule requires us to add two positions in order to meet the needs of our students in all of those areas. So, those are the middle school shifts. And then finally, at the high school, our ELL enrollment is growing at the high school level. One of the things that has become very clear, and I don't know that we've always thought about it in this way, but learning a second language or learning English as your second language and trying to master the high school curriculum at the same time is really challenging and we really need to provide the supports necessary for our students who are coming in. And we have a lot more Level 1 and Level 2 students. And so, we're required to increase one position in ELL. Mrs. Taylor looked at her schedule and in order to address the increased enrollments in sophomore and junior year, she's targeted these two areas, increasing in social studies and increasing in a business, technology, and robotics teacher. We're hoping to find someone who can do all three things. So, that might be asking a lot, but we think we can do it. And so, that's where we're going. And then finally, in the same manner, increasing the academic support. They call their student support, student success program, the Beacon Program at the high school. Again, that is staffed right now by a school adjustment counselor, but we're looking to add the academic supports for... As we enter, re-enter the high school and as we re-enter the school year, we anticipate some significant trauma challenges that we need to address. We know that we're living in a time that is very unsettling and I think in particular, our high school students are a group that we're really worried about. So, we're really looking to support that re-entry and support them in their education. So, those were the positions and that's the description of any changes. For the most part, you know, given the current situation, and I know that Mr. Ailes and the mayor are going to speak a little bit more to the cities, what the city is facing next year. And so, rather than me steal their thunder, I thought I would leave it to them. I knew that would be probably the best way to do it. What I have here is what we had originally looked at when we spoke last week. The appropriated budget for FY20 was $61,017,942. We had built the budget that's in the budget book with an initial thought that we would be... That 1.5 million would be an additional appropriation that we might be able to secure from the city. And so, therefore, your budget book states a draft budget appropriation of $62,517,942. I will say, and I know that many of you are aware of it already, in subsequent conversations with the mayor and with Bryant, it's, you know, the continued forecast that's coming from the state is really... It's not going up, it's going down. And we're hearing more and more challenges that we're going to have. And as there's no budget yet and there's no state budget and the city isn't really confident or sure of what they're doing, they did inform me that they believe that the appropriation was probably going to be closer to 1.4 million. So, what I did do... was probably going to be closer to one point four million. Um so what I did do, just for your sake, is sort of show you what an adjusted budget would look like at one point four million. Um I have to tell you, I I I know that we're in times that it's so uncertain. I don't know that there's ever been a time when the state has had so much uncertainty about how they were going to be able to approach budgeting. Um but I thought for for our matters of discussion and transparency, it was best to kind of just go forward and and open um open the discussion up with the numbers that we know as of today. So um I don't know, Mayor Cahill or Bryant, if you want to speak to this a little or jump in. Um you know, I don't want to.
Sure. I I I know Mr. Ailes has a presentation, which I uh am going to help him with in a minute. But um specifically uh to Dr. Trochik's point about the one four, one five, um what's happened is over the last couple of weeks, more and more of the um the, I guess, the smoke signals coming out of Beacon Hill, the guidance, the conversations uh have led Mr. Ailes to believe that we need to project a seventeen and a half uh seventeen and a half percent uh overall cut in local aid. Now, you know, in past recessions, the state has done things in different ways, but whether the unrestricted general government aid is one number and the chapter seventy is another, whatever they average out to, that's really what we have to deal with, because the money is all one one pot of money we're trying to run our 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 all of our city with, including our schools, right? So um if it comes out to seventeen and a half percent, that's about an additional four hundred thousand that we won't get. So if if it if that's where the local aid lands from the state, then we see the need to that a hundred thousand of that come from uh what we would otherwise have hoped to to be able to push over to the school budget. So the difference in fifteen percent local aid cut to seventeen and a half is about four hundred thousand. It's about a hundred thousand in what can come to the schools. You school committee members all understand this, but since we're in the public um hearing setting, I want to make sure I say aloud that, you know, if there's a seventeen and a half percent cut to state aid, and this is a rough number, Mr. Ailes could refine it, but if there's a seventeen and a half percent cut, that means there'll be about one 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 point five seven five million less money coming from the state. So the first thing we need to do is with additional city funds, plug that gap. The second thing would be to put new money in. So if we're able to go to one point four million in quote new money, that really means two point nine seven five million in new money. Um because we have to first plug the gap and then look to meet the the additional needs. So stop there, because I I I think that's what you're looking for, Dr. Trochik, was just some context for that.
Yep.
Change in in potential number.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Trochik. I just want to say, if if it lands at fifteen percent, then we'll push that hundred thousand back into the mix, right? But if it goes to seventeen and a half, we we we've got to be able to uh to meet that additional shortfall. So thanks.
And I and I'm not sure if we want to turn it over to Bryant to do his presentation to give full context to everything before you do questions, um, Mr. Able, but whatever you prefer to do, I just figured I'd.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you. Mr. Ailes, would you mind sharing your slides?
Sure. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um appreciate your comments, Dr. Trochik. Um as the mayor said, uh we had been talking at at length about a number of issues that we are trying to to struggle through during this budget season. Um a little bit of context I would just add to to the recent comment about the local aid. Um the the information that we're hearing that is causing us to revisit the local aid reduction estimates are that back during the Great Recession, um the state lost four point six billion dollars in tax revenue over a two-year period. And what happened subsequent to that was a initial year reduction of state aid of fifteen percent and a second year's uh reduction of an additional, I believe it was six or seven percent. I've got the slide here somewhere where we can show. Um but because the projected shortfall uh for the coming year at the state level is over five billion in tax revenue, and that's in a one-year period, we feel that what historically had been over multiple years is going to be a little more front-loaded uh in terms of impact to the city. And so that's why we feel in in uh in caution, we are we are basically reducing the budget down by another two and a half percent of local aid, which the mayor said was four hundred thousand. Um so thank you for the opportunity to just clarify that. Um I will share some slides here with you, because the um the logical question we all have going into this is, you know, we've been hearing a lot about um our financial situation, the reserves, what they mean to the city, and uh we've had a lot of discussion about that. So the mayor and I are going to go through these slides, and we're both, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, going to chime in and and kind of play off each other a little bit on these um to to share as much information as we can about about the uh what we do know and frankly, what we don't know.
Thank you.
Sure. Let me just try to get this to a slideshow here. Okay. Um so the the first two things that the mayor and I wanted to point out was that there are a number of things that we're dealing with, some of which are within our control, uh and other things are just not within our control. Um things that we're all faced with as policymakers, and you frankly, in this body, are spending decisions, the contractual and legal obligations that we obligate the city to, uh and how much uh we decide to use stabilization support um to support the spending levels. And those are all decisions collectively we have control over, um and we can kind of guide through what it is we're facing. The things that are out of our control, and we're going to get into these a little bit more, are um the depth of the economic impact, um you know, the length and timing uh of how uh how deep that impact is, uh as well as the total value that we can anticipate from the various revenue sources that we know on some level are going to be effective. And the reason I kind of pulled these apart uh in these two categories is because the things we can control, we need to make conscious decisions about. The things we can't control, we need to be mindful of, because we need to be prepared for a range of possibilities. And and our reserves and our financial stability needs to be able to handle that range of possibilities, which frankly, right now are unknown. Um so for instance, we won't know what the bottom looks like until we're there, right? We know we're going down in terms of revenue, but we don't know where the bottom is for our various revenue sources. And we can make reasonable predictions based on historical data, but frankly, this is a situation that we've never been in before. So we try to gather that data and make the best assumptions we can to try to build a responsible budget, but we really don't know until we are faced in that exact situation, where the bottom is for motor vehicle excites, where the bottom is for sales tax uh on meals or state aid. Um we also don't know, and this is an important one, how the economy in various revenue sources will rebound. Now, these aren't just funky letters that I threw up here. They're actual illustrations that represent types of rebounds um that economists use. So the first one, for example, is a V rebound, which is where you have declines, and then you immediately bounce back uh up towards the levels you were at before. The next one, an L, is when you have a a a decline, and then it's a very slow and modest growth back to a particular level. Um the third one, which is frankly, in my opinion, the most uh one of the most scary, is kind of a double dip, uh looks kind of like a stock market chart, where you might have some dips in revenues, think you've stabilized, begin to climb out of it, and then you get hit with the with a second wave um of financial uh pressure. So these are all possibilities that we're faced with. And every revenue source that we're projecting can act differently. You know, we don't know exactly how quickly meals are going to come back uh versus state aid. Um and the last one you have here is more of a U, which is similar to to what the last uh Great Recession was like, where we had a a significant drop-off, and then a few years of relatively stagnant activity, and then the and then we began to climb out. Um so the last piece I want to address that we won't know until we know is, we don't know when these revenue sources begin to rebound, to what level they will rebound to. And I know there were some comments about this chart the last time I presented to you all, and this is really a continuation of that discussion. Um but I figured the mayor suggested we put this back up here, because it shows that even after six years during our last two recessions, we still had not rebounded to the level we were at in terms of local aid, even after six years in real dollars. So that's something to consider when we talk about reserves and how to use them and how to make sure they last the length of the pressure. Um one other note that I want to point out, and uh and Mayor, if you want to chime in, please feel free, but with these two recessions, what this chart doesn't show is that the blue line was the recession during the early two thousands, and it goes from point zero to year six. And it shows that you're just starting to climb out, and in year six, you were about ten percent off from the revenue point you started at. But what it doesn't show is in year seven, that's when the late two thousands recession started. So you see, if they were, if it was a a ten-year chart, you would see this dip, and then you would see a subsequent secondary dip. And so that's something to keep in mind as well when we talk about how to make sure the city can can get through what we don't know lies ahead. So we thought it would be good if we um gave some examples of why it's important to keep spending levels in check, because that is what we can control. And so this is an illustration which shows um FY nineteen through FY uh I think it's twenty-five there. I can't see because I've got.
Yeah, it is.
The spending levels that we are anticipating um are that from FY twenty to FY twenty-one will have very modest level increase. But then we know, because of obligations we're already engaged in, that FY twenty-two will grow significantly. And I presented this last time we spoke, it's over five million dollar growth between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two that we need to be mindful of and be prepared to handle. That's related to over two million dollars in new debt for the middle school and the police station. Um there are some uh anticipated contractual obligations with our sanitation um agreements. We have pension obligations. We have healthcare obligations. Um and then there's a few others uh that get thrown in as well to basically build a budget five million dollars, if not more, than what the FY twenty-one level is. The 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 revenues I've put here is just to illustrate the gaps that are possible, right? So in FY nineteen, you can see that revenue um actually exceeded the spending levels, and that's, we were able to put that back into free cash, um and we'll be able to use that at a later date. FY twenty, we will actually uh pretty much break even. Uh revenues will meet our expenditure levels. But then for FY twenty-one, we're projecting shortfalls in revenues. The difference between the yellow line and the green line are what we need to figure out how to manage. That's the gap. And what is um scary about the revenue side of things is, we don't know, based on all the last slides we just looked at, we don't know what the revenue is really going to be like uh beyond the very near term. So we need to prepare for multiple variations of potential revenue streams. And so you can see that there's different types of gaps that may need to be filled. Um as we go further out into the crystal ball, um you know, the range of possibilities become much greater. Um and then the last piece that's important um to note and here where I have it circled around FY twenty-five is, the whole goal of managing through this process is to ultimately get the spending level back in line with the revenue level. That's when you've managed it, okay? So in this example here, we've got three, four, possibly five years' worth of uh budget gaps that we need to fill uh potentially with reserves and 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 or bringing spending levels down to to a reasonable level. The reason we thought this was important to understand is because the logical question that one can have is, well, here we are in FY twenty-one, why can't we use a significant portion of the reserves in FY twenty-one to hold up spending levels to a level that we want to spend at? And the reason is because if you are to increase your FY twenty-one spending levels, it creates a larger gap in each of the years going forward, and it prolongs the time in which you begin to bring your spending levels back into your revenues levels. So not only does it create larger gaps each year, but it also means that it's going to take you longer to get the two back in line. And we, in doing that, you basically degrade degrade your financial stability and your reserve levels more than maybe you're able to.
And and Mr. Ailes, if I could, I um if we if we run out of reserves, i.e. the ability to plug the gaps, before the revenues fully rebound, we'll be we'll be left with some pretty painful cuts to make at that point, because we won't have, our 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 real, obviously, our goal is to uh appropriately and thoughtfully utilize the the reserves. And I think that's the, these are just a couple cautionary notes. When when you get to a later slide, I want to I want to jump in and talk a little bit about the um, you know, the difference in the 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 way the way draws on the uh on the reserves can compound. But I I know it's a later slide that'll get us a look at that.
Yeah, uh I think it's in two slides, Mayor. Um before we jump to that one, I think what the mayor's talking about is our reserve levels. And so um this is where we believe we will be at this point in time, and granted, the landscape's constantly changing every day. Um we believe at the end of this fiscal year, we will have fourteen point seven million in stabilization, and we will certify a free cash balance around eight million. Um there's a lot of factors that go into that free cash number. Um so there is a wide range of possibilities, but we think it should be around the eight million mark. So when you combine those two, you're looking at two twenty-two point seven million dollars, which is which is a significant amount of money to the and and we're in a fortunate position to have these resources um to be able to help us manage through this this problem. I can tell you, though, based on preliminary estimates where we think our spending levels will be for FY twenty-one, um and uh what we think we will need to do, that that twenty-two point seven will go down to seventeen point eight million by the end of FY twenty-one. So uh it's a significant dip in year one with a lot of the landscape still unknown, and that's what scares me and keeps me up at night. Um and so this slide, I think, is the one the mayor wanted to talk to. Uh you want to take it from here, Mayor?
Sure. Well, sure. I'll just make a couple of points. So so as Mr. Ailes pointed out, we we expect uh end of twenty-one, we're going to have dipped into free cash for an additional three point eight million. It's two million towards the police station project, which has been a a multi-year uh plan of agreement between the council and us um to put real dollars in so that we we don't have to bond for as much. And that's that's been the plan. So two million will do that. Um and then it's about a million three for the new ladder fire truck uh that we need to purchase. We need to order, because there's about a year lag between ordering and getting. Um and I I believe that that's uh that takes us up to leaving about half a million dollars for an HVAC system at the library, which has been needed. We've been kind of limping along, and we just can't put that off any longer. Uh and that may be more than a half a million. We're waiting on a final quote. So it it'll of necessity draw down that free cash level. And in the past few years, with really strong economies and um revenues coming in over projections uh in certain instances, and new growth being um being higher than projected as well, we've been able to replenish that free cash. Um turnbacks to uh to operating budgets help as well, but we're all going to be closer to the bone with our operating budgets, every department, going into FY twenty-one. So we don't really anticipate, uh we may, and that would be great if we do, but we can't really anticipate kind of a re- a replenishment of uh of that number the way we have seen in recent years. Um so once we draw that down, we're looking at that as a flat number. Uh the other piece that I want to mention is, you know, as we're looking at uh stabilization funds, when Mr. Ailes showed those, excuse me, he showed the different uh different charts, the different ways of looking at this, uh where it bottoms and how long it how long it takes to recover. Um I think what we're concerned with is that he's showing four fiscal years here, and at the end of those four fiscal years under these projections, we're down to one point three million in our stabilization fund. Um our reserves are supposed to be at anywhere from thirteen to twenty-three percent of our operating budget. By that, I mean um based on best practices that bond rating agencies and the State Department of Revenue look to and to our um stated policy around reserves that we've agreed, worked through and agreed with the council on. Um we're supposed to try to have three to eight percent of our operating budget in in free cash or undesignated fund balance. That's the top number. And then another uh ten to fifteen percent in uh in stabilization funds. So you add that together, it's about thirteen to twenty-three. Now, we don't expect to be there at the end of a of a recession. Now, we don't expect to be there at the end of a, of a recession. Uh, but going into it, that's where we're, we're supposed to be. And we're, we're at about, I think I remember saying we were at about 16.23% when we were doing last year's budget. So we expect to draw it down, obviously, but we got to be careful about, uh, overdrawing early. And if the bounce back is slower than hoped, if we're into a 50-year and still needing to draw, we're, you know, we're, we're in a tough place. If we were to add a half million in, um, in stabilization draws in any given year beyond what we're looking at, that half million would compound by another half million and another. So, you know, if, if we weren't able to, uh, to discipline ourselves to what we're looking at collectively and say there was an extra half million draw, that would be in four years' time, 2 million. So we'd be, we'd be in the red on the stabilization fund and have drawn down additional undesignated fund balance or free cash, all of which would put us in a, in a kind of a perilous spot in terms of our, our finances. So, um, that's me, the layperson, saying it. I, I, you know, just because I think sometimes it, it, it helps us to hear uh, people with their own kind of level of financial background or comparable. Mr. Ailes, if I got any of that wrong, please correct it. But that, that's, I think, the thought I just wanted to share.
I think you're spot on, Mayor. Um, the, the other point in this slide that I would point out is the FY22 probable draw related to the stabilization. And that relates to the, the increases in expenditures that we know are coming. So you can see, even though the amount in FY21 is relatively modest, given the total balance, FY22 really begins to chew into that. Um, and we know that that's inevitable.
Mr. Ailes, you, you've referred to that a couple of times. Could you just give the details? Uh, I, I know some of it's the, the bonding for the, the final middle school and the police station.
Yeah, so, um, we have some debt falling off and we have some debt getting put on, um, which will result in a net increase to our debt budget of about 2.2 million. Um, in addition to that, we, uh, annually need to increase our pension, uh, contribution by 4.45%, which equates to about $550,000 increase every year. Um, healthcare, uh, for the city and schools. And I don't have these figures exactly, uh, right in front of me, so I'm going to kind of use rough ballparks. But it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for a 3% increase in healthcare for the cities and the school, uh, participants. Um, that's the 80% that the city matches for healthcare for its employees, as well as retirees. Um, and then there is also a significant unknown around our sanitation contract, um, which will likely result in hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've earmarked, I think, 300,000 to 500,000 um, in an increased cost when we renegotiate our sanitation costs. That has to do with the market around, um, textiles and recyclables uh, and the need to increase, um, basically the disposal fees for that component of our curbside pickup. Um, those are the big ones. Uh, there's a number of others, um, that add up cumulatively to a few hundred thousand dollars more. But overall, it's, uh, it's over five, uh, I want to say it's close to 5.5 million dollars in known cost increases, um, at this point in time, so. Um, Mayor, should I, did you want to make another point on this? Or do you want me to move to, I think, the last slide here?
Yeah, no, go right ahead, please.
Yeah, okay. So this is just kind of the philosophies that Mayor and I have been kind of discussing over the last few weeks and why the need is now to make the adjustments to the things we can control. And so I've just listed some very, very kind of matter-of-fact points. Uh, the sooner we implement spending reductions and control what we can control, the less we'll rely on our stabilization in each given year. The shorter the period we need to rely on the stabilization because the spending and the revenue will come back into line quicker. The more prepared we will be at the end of it to address the next issue. And I throw that in there because of what happened in the 2000s and the back-to-back recessions. Um, we need to be prepared for something similar if it could occur. Um, there's better chances to minimize the overall impact. And this, this alludes to what the mayor said earlier about if the reserves go, uh, so low that we're not able to, uh, you know, fill the spending gap in later years, that cliff is a lot sharper and deeper than it is right now by taking a few, uh, you know, pinches to, to budgets here and there to try to make it all work. Um, and the sooner, uh, the spending and revenues will realign, I, I talked about that all over, uh, earlier. But delaying the spending reductions or adding costs that are recurring in nature are going to require larger portions of the stabilization each year. They're going to prolong the timeframe the city needs to rely on its stabilization. And it's going to put the city undoubtedly in a worse financial position than if we made the spending cut sooner. And that could hinder our ability to address the next issue that's, that's down the pipe. Um, and it could put the city in a position to require more drastic reductions in the future. And so I wanted to just end on this note, um, as kind of a sobering reminder that it's kind of a call to action. We need to really tighten our belt and try to get this thing done in a way that's still responsible, still delivering good services that we're known for, um, but also has an eye towards the future.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes, and thank you, Mayor Cahill and Dr. Turocek for those overviews. I want to be respectful of the fact that we do have a member of the public, at least one, that signed up. And I did want to offer the opportunity, I see we have at least one other member of the public online with us. Um, if they were interested in, um, putting their name on the list to be called, um, please indicate with the hands up or the, the, the hand signal in the application. Um, and we will get to that in a moment. Um, members, did we have questions for Dr. Turocek, the mayor, or Mr. Ailes at this time? I'm looking for hands. I don't think I see any questions. So Ms. Bergeron, I believe we just have Mr. Michael Grazia from One Hathaway Ave.
Yes, I haven't had anybody else sign up.
Okay, um, I'll look for a hand from our other members of the public while, um, we welcome Mr. Grazia. You may unmute your phone line and, um, please state your name and address for the record, although I already have it here since you emailed in.
Oh, thank you, Mike Grazia from, um, One Hathaway Ave. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak today and thank you for everything you're doing during these challenging times. Um, I'd just say unfortunately, it looks like there's a lack of participation tonight. And please don't confuse that with satisfaction or acceptance. Um, when the true ramifications of this budget in this pandemic are felt next year, you will hear loud and clear how people feel about these decisions. Public meeting information is incredibly elusive on our city's websites unless you know, already know precisely where to go. So most parents have no idea whatsoever that this is happening tonight. So please, please keep this in mind. I know these are uncertain times, but we must not be fearful, even though we face great challenges. This is extremely difficult for everyone here and we are adults. Now imagine having to face this as a child. These 4,600 students that you care for just lost two months of school. Many students need school for their daily stability and structure, and that has been stripped away from them. The availability of technology, internet access and parental support has just divided the students more than ever. I fear it has divided them to the point that the achievement gap could be permanent for any struggling student. This could simply derail their train. In addition, the social emotional needs of the district has just experienced exponential growth. Students are going through degrees of trauma right now. Students will not simply come back and get into the swing of things. Both the educational and emotional needs of these students need to be addressed. Doing so requires counselors, smaller class sizes, more classroom supports. Unfortunately, this budget is not adequate to address this. Teachers aren't magicians, they can't simply do more every year. The budget has virtually the same number of staff to educate a district of students who is increasing in size every year. Now they are facing the greatest challenge of their teaching career with students who are facing the greatest challenge in their learning career. It simply does not provide the education that they truly need at this point in time. The scope of this budget does not match the scope of the problem before you. Please be cognizant that financial strategy is an, now, financial strategy and analysis is an art, not a science. A financial opinion is not right or wrong. Analysis requires decisions and assumptions. It's not a giant, simple mathematical formula. Strategy is not black and white. Two analysts might see, see the same situation completely differently. How data is presented, something as simple as using a dark red to show information can help trick the mind. You are the school committee, you are responsible for the students within this district. You are not responsible for city finances. Please make your decision based on your fiduciary duty, not someone else's fiduciary duty. I'd ask you to just look yourself in the mirror and ask if you've done everything that you can. If you've put every dollar that you can find to use, can you tell yourself that you did all you can do? Could you look at each one of these 4,600 students and tell them you searched long and hard for every dollar that you could find and provided as much as we had available to them? This may require taking financial risks. Maybe it means doing something that you feel uncomfortable with, but you can tolerate. Well, when you're being so aggressive that you start to feel uncomfortable, then and only then will you know that you're starting to do enough for them. These students deserve every bit of support that we can provide. They are the most challenging group of students you will ever be responsible for going into the most challenging year of school they will ever have in their lives with teachers being asked to do more than they ever have. I would ask you, but please just think of this and ask yourself if you have done everything you can for them.
Thank you, Mr. Grazia. I'll do one final call to see if we have any other members of the public that wish to speak. And one final call for our committee members, if there's any last questions we have for Dr. Turocek, Mayor Cahill, or Brian Ailes, our finance director. I'm not seeing any hands. At this time, we don't have any more public participation requests and we don't appear to have any questions. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn our public hearing.
No moves.
Thank you, Mr. Malady, and may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Visnick. We're going to do a roll call vote for adjournment of this meeting, but do stay on the line. We will be, um, opening our committee of the whole next. Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Kimberly Coelho.
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti.
Yes.
John Malady.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Lurinda Visnick.
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, we are now adjourned from our public hearing. And, um, next I would like to call to order our committee of the whole. Um, today is May 28th. It's a Thursday evening, 2020, and we are still being recorded um, by our friends at the BevCam studio who are also broadcasting us on channel 99 as well as their YouTube channel. Uh, I am also recording a local copy in case there's any technical difficulties here. Um, so this meeting is being recorded. Um, I think we can dispel with the pledge for this uh, and go right to our, our third action item, which is the approval of the meeting records from our April 29th Committee of the Whole meeting. They were distributed in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting records?
No moves.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Visnick. And again, by, uh, actually, I should ask, are there any edits, corrections? I'm not seeing any hands, so we'll do a roll call vote, Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Kimberly Coelho.
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti.
Yes.
John Malady.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Lurinda Visnick.
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, we have approved the meeting records from our April 29th, 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting. Okay, next on our agenda, we have some updates from Dr. Turocek. The floor is yours, Dr. Turocek. I'm on mute telling you, you're on mute, there we go.
Um, I think that you're, the first item in the superintendent update is the budget discussion and vote. Are you, uh, do you want to move into that? Do you have, does anyone have any questions for me? Is there anything that you would like, uh, or, or, you know, any more information I can provide that I haven't already done or that you have questions about?
Right, so, um, as a reminder, it's not typical that a body will vote in the same evening. Um, but I think after our detailed discussion last week and this week and framing it as, you know, it is what it is at this point, we don't know what September will bring. Um, we had put it here so that we could, you know, get our budget over to the mayor um, in time for his presentment to the city council. Um, so we would be looking for a motion. And as Dr. Turocek indicated, the, the amount that we put out into our budget book um, has, um, a, a slight revision recommendation um, due to the, um, continued information that our, our city has been seeing.
I'll make that motion.
You make the motion for the revised amount or the initial amount?
For the revised amount.
Okay, so, uh, motion has been made to put forward a budget of $62,417,942. Does that have a second? I will second it for discussion, so um, do committee members have, um, any dialogue, looking for hands, Ms. Visnick? You're on mute.
Thank you. Um, I think that I agree that we are in extraordinary times. If I hear that term out of my own mouth anymore, I maybe have to rip my own tongue out, not to mention hearing it from other people. Um, but I have some serious reservations. And it is true that we don't know what we don't know. But what we do know is that today we have a number of students who are not engaged. And at our curriculum meeting, however many weeks ago, we heard that that number is on the order of 10% at the high school alone. And no other schools reported a percentage or a number. And that means all those children who are not engaged are falling that much further behind. And we have not talked about any concrete plans of how to bring those children back in. Although we have a position at both the middle school and the high school that will be dedicated to exactly that task, I don't think that when we talked about adding those positions, we had any idea that the numbers would be as great as they are now. So I'm tremendously concerned about the level of student to counselor ratio. And we're not adding a lot of new counselors, and yet we know every single student is experiencing some amount of trauma right now. And so, uh, although I recognize and acknowledge that our revenues are down tremendously, I, I recognize and applaud the efforts of every administrator and, and every teacher in our district who, uh, on a, on no notice was asked to pivot. Um, if you could go more than 180 degrees and, and, and not come full circle, I would give a number bigger than 180 degrees. Uh, they've done tremendous work, but there are even greater problems than I feel we're acknowledging with this budget. I have serious reservations because of that. I think that we were in kind of trouble to start with. People who ever hear me speak know that I talk about the achievement gap. And without the Student Opportunity Act money, now, now we're not doing anything to try to attack that. Um, it's, I, I'm sad. I'm sad on many, many levels because I know so many different families are struggling. And and we don't know what we don't know. And so if the doors don't open, or if they don't open in the quote-unquote standard way or what used to be the standard way, it's just going to continue to multiply the problems for those families that are already struggling. And, and, and this budget doesn't do anything for any of those problems. That's, that's, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Mr. Malady, I saw your hand next.
No, thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to say, you know, thank you to Mr. Grazia, um, for speaking. And, um, uh, if Bryant is still on, um, I don't know if he is, can't see him. Um, could, uh, would it be possible for, um, for Bryant to put, I really liked that slide that had the different types of possibilities with the, the V recovery. Um, because I, I, as you, as I, during your presentation, one of the thoughts that hit my mind was thinking about how, you know, God forbid, um, we go into something like, there he is, like the, the double dip. Um, and how we can think that we're, you know, have a more aggressive or progressive or friendly budget. And then to have the carpet pulled out from underneath us. or friendly budget, and then to have the carpet pulled out from underneath us. Or I appreciated also the U one, that was most similar to the recession. You know, thinking about these images, is, those images are going to be burnt in my brain for a long time, because I think it's useful to us to understand that the budget that we're putting forward, and the budgets that will be put forward in the future, are the best that we can do, given we don't know what the future is. And if we find ourselves in a maybe more aggressive recovery next year and two years, then I hope that we'll have budgets that can reflect that. And I think it's fair to say that if anyone is feeling unsatisfied, or have concerns, or is just unhappy with what we're putting forward, I think that's a good sign, because we want to do what's best for our kids, and there are some issues that we're not going to be able to address under this budget. But I'm also at a point where we're playing the hand that we're dealt, and I appreciate, you know, the fiscal concerns and the advice from other members on this committee, but also on the city side. So I have personal reservations with this as well, but I know that this is the best that our team can do, and thinking about, we don't want to set ourselves up, dig ourselves in a deeper hole for recovery, so I want to say thank you very much. Then thank you, Bryant.
Do we have other committee members looking for hands? I'll call on myself. You know, the hand that we're dealt, I echo what Mr. Malady has just said. This is, you know, one area where, you know, we both have some control, and we have so many unknowns that I think we can recognize that with our mayor, with our city counselors, with our taxpayers and ratepayers, we have partners in this period of uncertainty. And, you know, if some of the forecasting and estimates don't turn out to be true, and our revenues are higher, or our state and locally is higher, I have confidence that we can come back together to, you know, address those needs that we definitely are not able to fulfill with this budget. And so I'm supportive of this number that's been brought forward. I think it's anybody's guess how we may need to redistribute. Some of it comes September. As you know, budget transfers are likely going to be on the agenda right from the get-go, once we figure out how best to meet the needs, given the situation that we face in September. And so if we could pass this along to city council tonight, that would be my preference, and just have faith and trust that everyone here wants to do what's right for our students. Mayor Cahill, I see your hand.
Thanks, Madam President. I appreciate everybody's thinking here. I just, I guess I do want to say that, you know, I don't, I don't believe that what we're doing tonight in voting this budget, if we vote to approve where it sits, is a, you know, is a negative thing. I don't think that we should be kind of hanging our heads and thinking that this is not a good budget. The reality is that, you know, we worked hard collectively, we pushed each other, we've worked hard in the last number of years we've been working together, and a lot of really outstanding things are happening, and a lot of things have been funded. We're holding on to things that have been funded. We're actually in the middle of a global pandemic, adding five and a half full-time equivalencies to our staff. I know that, we all know that there's more that we want to do, and that, you know, if we were able to, we would do. However, I do think that we're doing a lot. I think the educational programming that we've been putting out together is outstanding. We all know that there are always more places to reinforce, to improve, but I also believe that our team, led by Dr. Trocheck, are doing that. And so I do also just want to ask Dr. Trocheck if you would just, from your perspective, if you could just speak for a minute, because, again, I understand the frustrations at not doing more, but I also believe we're doing a lot of great stuff. And if you could just speak to the ways that we are addressing our areas of concern, our achievement gap, our most challenged students and families, you know, really going back and going back to some of the additional programming and staffing we've put in over the last couple of budgets, and what we're looking at, and what your plan is, because I know that we all are concerned with the remote learning and the inability to have kids in front of us right now, and we know that there's still a bit of, there's still a lot of uncertainty as to how that will look in September. But just, you know, what we know we're already doing, and what you're planning to do in the different eventualities, with the resources that we believe we collectively are able to put on the table. Thanks, Madam President.
So would you like me to speak to that before anybody else?
Yes, yes, please, Dr. Trocheck.
All right, no worries. No, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. I mean, there's not one of you that isn't speaking exactly the truth, and, you know, I hear, Ms. Visnick, you know, we want to continue to work on addressing the gap that we know unfinished learning is really an issue for all of our students, and it's exasperating the achievement gap situation for kids who are already behind, and we acknowledge that. We have done some things, I think, over the past couple of years in our effort to try to address some of those things, particularly in the areas of social, emotional. We added our out-of-district counselors that are working to try to work with outside agencies and wraparound services for some of our most vulnerable children. We did add the programs for addressing mental health issues in students who are trying to re-enter. I have to say, and it actually goes sort of into almost my next item on the budget, you know, to talk about Beverly Keeps Learning, we entered into this remote learning situation as an emergency, right? So there are a couple of things. When you create a programming, usually it's intentional and purposeful, and it's driven, and you have time to devise it, and you align it, and you align it horizontally and vertically, and you do a lot of work to make sure that it's cohesive and consistent. And, you know, on March 12th, we entered an emergency situation, and as a result, we did our very best to kind of put together what we could for remote learning. Our plan moving forward into next year is to revisit and readdress all of those things. We're using some, we are tracking at each one of our schools, every child is being tracked. That doesn't mean that they're, that means we know where they are. We're looking at benchmarking across a number of different factors, so that we have a comprehensive set of data that we can look at, and how do we assess as we move into next year, who has had some significant learning loss, who has had a somewhat effective, you know, path, and they're still heading in a consistent trajectory, and how are we going to enter into the school year and address the enormity of disparities that we have? That is of our utmost concern. And yet, in addition to all that, we have to look at what has the trauma done, what impact has this entire situation had on all of our learners, on all of our teachers, on all of our community? And so we have been spending the time that we're closed with teachers continuing in professional development. We actually had a person, a woman, Lisa Dieter, come in, and she presented a two-hour workshop for teachers on trauma-sensitive teaching and what it looks like, and then she followed that up with some question-and-answer situations for teachers. So we're doing our best to fill their toolbox as best we can, to address some of the things that you are mentioning in particular. We, I'm not going to use the word extraordinary, I'm going to use unprecedented, I'll use a million other words, there's just, there are just too many new vocabulary words that I've become using on a regular basis to describe what we're in. And I think, I think the one, the one thing that we do, and the reason I start my presentation off with the goals, is because that, we do have to remember that even despite the, these obstacles that we're facing, we need to kind of stay true to our commitment to the vision for trying to provide equitable, innovative, and rigorous learning opportunities, because we know that that's important, and we know that we have a lot of work to do around kind of filling those inequities and figuring out how to do it. But, you know, we are committed to doing it. I can't tell you what September is going to look like. When we finish the budget vote, I'll give you an update on the conference call with the commissioner, which didn't give me much more information, but I'll share that lack of information with you. And so, you know, I hope that addressed the questions that you had, and I don't know if anyone has anything else to add.
Yeah, I'll call on our other members, Ms. Quelo, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Ferretti. Any hands, any questions, comments? Ms. Ferretti, I see your hand first.
Yes, thanks. I just want to say, you know, I think in this time, we're all faced with so many challenges, and it's not just Beverly, it's obviously worldwide, and I think Beverly, you know, we all obviously have things we can improve on, but I'm so proud of the work that the educators, the administrators have been, they've been doing since this all started. I know that in speaking to contacts and colleagues in other communities, Beverly is looked upon as a leader among what we've been doing academically, for our students, the resources, the support, and, you know, I'm extremely proud. And I know you can't make everyone happy all the time, but I will say that amidst this pandemic and the challenges we're all facing, the uncertainties that are facing us, I think that our teams are doing a fantastic job. And I thank Mr. Ailes for the presentation on what was, I'm sure, a very difficult budget to put together in this time. But, you know, I think that there's a lot of people criticizing what we could be doing, what we're not doing, but I want you to hear loud and clear, you know, that I think that you're doing a great job, given what we're all dealing with in this world, and I'm hearing that a lot from, and I know we don't always hear the positives, because the negatives tend to speak louder, but I want to just get that out there and say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferretti. Ms. Robinson, I see your hand next.
I also wanted to thank everybody for the work that's been done, and just wanted to say, if you, if you look at the teachers and what they've been able to do, as Dr. Trocheck said, in an emergency, I just want us to think about, just imagine what they're going to have, what they'll be able to do with the time to plan something. So that's what they need, is time to plan, and I don't think any additional money in the budget is going to, is going to do much more than that. Of course, we always, of course, we always would love more money, but it's not the responsible time to put any more money in. So again, thank you for everybody, all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any other members? Does any member want to speak again? Are we ready to have a vote this evening? We have a motion on the table for an FY21 school budget of $62,417,942 to be appropriated by the city council through the mayor's request. I think we're ready to vote. I'm not seeing any objections, so I'm going to call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
John Malady?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Lorraine Devisnick?
No.
And Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of six to one, the motion has passed. We will be forwarded along to the mayor, a budget of $62,417,942 for FY21. Thanks. Dr. Trocheck, if you would, transition us into the Beverly Keeps Learning update.
Yep, thank you very much, and I'm going to keep this one somewhat brief. We are moving ahead in thinking about planning for the coming year. We're, our seniors have finished their online learning, our, the remainder of the students will finish up on June 19th. We're, I think we are continuously reflecting on what we're doing and how we're doing it. We're seeing improvement. We're working on areas, when we get feedback, that, you know, I think the biggest area that we want to continue to grow in is some cohesiveness and consistency across grade levels in that horizontal articulation of lessons. Our administrators are working with teachers, and teachers are working in teams, and so I think that's been a really helpful part for us as we take a look at what we can do. We're trying really hard to capture the areas that are working well, and identify areas that are challenging, and make note of that, so as we go into the summer and we begin planning for what will likely be some form of hybrid around remote learning and in-person learning, that we have some of that information to go forward. Additionally, we're continuing to strengthen the skills of our teachers by providing, they're actually working in PLCs, and it's teacher-led development amongst each other, so when a teacher provides a lesson and learns from it, they're coming back and working in the PLC groups. Judy Miller is orchestrating that. We've had some very, very robust conversations and discussions and learning going on, so we continue to do that. We're assessing the tools that we're using, and what tools we'll need as we move forward in terms of licensure to make the shift, so that our content is available digitally and easily. And in addition, we're looking really closely at what we will need in terms of planning. I spent about two hours today working with, we have a COVID task force group, municipal department heads across the city, and in particular with Carol Ogilevich, and, I hope I said that right, and Catherine Barrett, who's spearheading some of the CARES Act money that the city has, and Michael Collins around, you know, sort of what do we need? We had a conference call with the commissioner, where he outlined the task force that's working at the state level, led by Ed Davis. Ed Davis, if you'll remember, is, I think he was the police commissioner during the Boston Marathon. He now has a consulting firm, the department, the state Department of Education has hired him as a, his firm as a consultant in terms of crisis management, in terms of some of the reopening planning that we have going forward, identifying what the needs of the schools will be to reopen safely. We're in the beginning stages of that, and right now, that's largely looking at what will we need for PPE, what will we need, what will teachers need to know and be able to do in terms of the physical safety of themselves and students, what will we need to do in terms of our sort of checklist of students as they walk through, whether it's temperatures, whether it's, you know, assessing their physical well-being as they come in, what will our nurses in our schools need in terms of equipment regarding like the N95 masks, and shoe protectors, and bonnets, and gowns? There's conversations about the hundreds of thousands of ounces of hand sanitizer that we'll need to have available. We're looking at arrival and dismissal procedures, and what we might need in terms of, you know, cones and jersey barriers, so that we're setting up our arrival decals, and how we're going to be able to manage our flow of traffic through the buildings, so that it's safe, all of those things. That was the, a majority of the discussion, and also wait, we're waiting on what it will look like if we have a hybrid. So the commissioner hopes, so he will be getting to us by the beginning of next week, a list of what the PPE requirements that we should anticipate for the start of the school year, what we would need to open safely, how will be a need to look at that, and he will also be getting, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, giving us some guidance on what hybrid, what will we be able to do, what will hybrid look like, what will that mean in terms of how many students in a classroom at a time? Will we be allowed to offer an exclusive online remote option for families? How will we develop that curriculum? What will, you know, what will that look like? So I think when we talked earlier about transfers being sort of a key word as we go into the next school year, I'm thinking, looking at our cost centers, how we reallocate our resources, how we're able to identify what we need and how we use those resources will be really So that's sort of the state of Beverly Keeps Learning. I mean, we're working very hard to kind of identify what we can plan ahead. We need, we will be, as we were in the beginning, a little bit on hold until we get the official guidance, because you don't want to go too far down a road and then, and then find out that the way that you're planning, it won't work. I will also say we're continuing to work with the regional superintendents, and in particular, we're in a partnership with PBD in Salem, and the superintendents and mayors in those three communities are working together to share resourcing ideas about what reopening would look like. So that's, I don't know if there are any particular questions that any of you have around the Beverly Keeps Learning aspect?
Thank you, Dr. Trocheck. I see Ms. Quelo's hand. Go ahead, Ms. Quelo. There you go.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Trocheck, so I do have one small concern. When we open that up...
When we open back up, there will be kids that might not want to go back and strictly want to learn from home. What kind of progress or plans do we have in place for any of those special needs kids that may be on IEPs that don't feel comfortable going to school and would rather learn from home?
That's a great question. I think, and I know Ms. Slansky's on the line with me here. I don't know if you want to join me, Bethany, but I think, you know, we are required to provide services based upon a student's IEP and will continue to do that. I'm not sure exactly how those specifics. And I know that there are ongoing discussions with Russell Johnson in the Department of Education. So Bethany, do you want to chime in on that one at all? Did you hear the question?
I did, yep. So what I would add to that is just that, you know, if for any reason we're in a period of remote learning for students with special education needs, we have developed individualized remote learning plans that outline exactly how those needs will be met in the remote learning environment. So we have the IEPs which drive the instruction, but we also have specific remote learning plans which may look different than the IEPs. And so that will be in place, you know, if there are students who are learning remotely next year, we will continue to develop those individualized plans alongside and collaboration with the families.
Thank you, Ms. Slansky.
So, you know, there are so many things that we will be addressing in the coming weeks, so many areas that we'll be exploring, how we can maximize efficiencies, how we can utilize and reallocate the resourcing that we have. Our work around PPE, we're not alone in this. The city is a great partner. There, we're not, in terms of the funding for this, there is some funding that will be coming in from the CARES Act. We're working with the city. So there's actually sort of a couple of different pools of money that we're identifying. And in addition to the CARES Act that the city's getting, the school department gets, is getting an emergency relief money in the form. It's called ESER. That's what you'll start to hear. It's called E-S-S-E-R. That's because acronyms are how we roll in education. Then the ESER funding is what will be, is designed to specifically address mitigating the negative impact of the closure for some of our vulnerable students. So we're looking at some programming in terms of if, in fact, we're allowed to have summer programming, how will we address summer learning to attempt to work for some of that unfinished learning that students have from previous grade levels? If we're allowed back in school, what will any extended day opportunities or any summer, I mean, any vacation week kinds of opportunities look like? But again, until we know where we stand in terms of the restrictions that might continue into the summer and into the fall, we're going to have a number of different options in plan and, you know, in progress and respond accordingly once we know what's happening in terms of guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Turocek. Do any other committee members have questions for Dr. Turocek on the topic of Beverly keeps learning? I'm not seeing any hands. Do you want to transition now to our end of year celebration information?
Yes, I do. And I actually have a little PowerPoint that I'm going to share. So I'm going to open up and share my screen sort of to walk us through that as we go. I know that there's been a number of questions. People are interested in how we're closing out the year. We have spent a lot of time working as a leadership team and with our teachers and with our parents to decide how best to do that. I'm going to share with you, I'm going to begin at the elementary and share all the way through to high school as to what we have planned as we go forward. So as I told you, I think a couple of weeks ago, we have sort of divided into some task forces around what we can accomplish so that we can get more done. At the elementary level, the principals have worked together. Julie Smith actually had the lead in some of the work that we did around this. They have been working in particular to make sure that we're consistent across schools as to what we can do. We know that when we work together, we can get more accomplished. We have a lot of events to close out the year as best we can, mirroring some of the things we do and some brand new events. The PE teachers across the elementary schools have created a virtual field day. So our elementary students will all be participating in a field day. That is a situation that was planned together. So there's some consistencies across what people will be able to see and do. Our teachers are working on virtual field trips. So one of the things that we've all learned through this closure is that there is a myriad of resources available online and the opportunity on these field trips to go just about anywhere in the world. So I know that in conjunction with whatever project-based learning opportunities are going on or whatever particular content areas are being studied, some virtual field trips are being planned. There are game days that are being planned at buildings and even, yes, talent shows. So those are some of the end-of-year activities that are being put together for our students in our elementary. In terms of grade four, typically, we have our moving up ceremonies at our elementary schools for our grade four students who are rising up to the middle school. Again, this is a consistent plan across all elementary schools. The principals work together to make sure that the experience is, you know, cohesive across the district. Right now, there's a car parade clapout that is planned for our elementary students on the last day of school with a rain date at each school. Families are going to participate by decorating their vehicles to celebrate students and they'll be greeted by faculty and some festive outdoor decorations at each one of the school sites. The class t-shirts will be distributed ahead of time, so students will be wearing them in the car parade. The students will receive a gift box or gift bag in them. It will contain the grade four yearbook and the certificate of completion, the items that they would typically get at that moving up ceremony. And each of the schools are commemorating the end of the year with a movie and slideshow that will be shared virtually with the students. So that's where we are. And here's the date, June 19th. Each one of the schools is holding the parade at 10 o'clock on their campuses. Dr. Flaherty and I were kind of lamenting and it would be really, it's going to be really hard for us to be at all five schools, so we're going to have to divide and conquer. However, I know that each principal will make this a really special event for their school. So that is what we have planned for the fourth grade to close out the year. Then we talk about how are we going to transition those fourth grade students up to the middle school? Typically, right around this time, the principal and an administrator would be visiting the students in their buildings and they have a presentation and overview that they receive from the administration this year that will be done, but it will be done virtually. We weren't quite sure how that would work. We spent some time putting together and Mrs. Oliver and Mr. Conan actually piloted it for the fourth grade over at Cove on May 22nd. They learned a lot. I think Mrs. Oliver was comfortable doing it there largely because it's her school still. So that was helpful. And they're working out the kinks. And so the Ayers presentation for students, parents and teachers will be on June 3rd at 1 o'clock. The Centerville presentation will be June 3rd at 2:30. The Hannah presentation will be June 8th at 2:30. And the North Beverly presentation will be June 8th at 1 o'clock. And again, this is a virtual presentation via Google Meet, but the students and the parents and the teachers are all welcome in. I think they learned quite a bit from their first presentation. So moving forward, they're really excited about meeting the students and welcoming them to the middle school. They're planning an open house for the week of August 17th. Again, if permitted, and you're going to hear me say if permitted almost as much as we say extraordinary times because we really don't know what will be permitted. But we're going to move along with a hope and a prayer that the week of the 17th, we'll be able to open the building for tours. Otherwise, if not, if it's not permitted, we will be providing tours, but they will be virtual tours. And we'll have more information on that coming as we get closer to the time. And then I just want to, as a reminder, there is ongoing registration for new students at all of our schools. However, our buildings are accessible to families, new families to the district by appointment only. And they would, if you're wondering how you do that, you can always start at the central office talking to Mrs. Bergeron and she'll direct you. But we will have by appointment only opportunities for registration for new students. So that is the elementaries and their transition up to fifth grade. We move on to sort of the eighth grade. How are we celebrating their end of year? There is an eighth grade, the list is kind of in progress still for a lot of things. The team teachers and the committee are planning virtual activities for all eighth grade students. I think somewhat in line with what we talked about, some virtual field trips, some culmination of some project-based learning, some of those things. I don't know if you had the opportunity to see it yet, but the National Junior Honor Society ceremony was conducted virtually as well. And Ms. McBrath and Ms. Khan did a great job. And it was released on 5/21, so parents and families have had the opportunity to see that as well. There will be a virtual awards ceremony that will be put together and released on June 17th and a virtual recognition ceremony that will be released on June 18th. And I do know that our administrators at the middle school have been working closely with our surrounding communities to mirror, you know, to kind of figure out what are other communities doing and how will it look? And so we have some close connections with them on that. And then finally, there's a student, there will be an opportunity for students to return to the middle school prior to the end of the year, again, on a schedule with appointment only. And they'll be there to pick up belongings, yearbooks, and they'll receive their grade eight t-shirt. So that is the end of year. And again, now, these are the students that are transitioning up to the high school. So we wanted a separate slide on what that transition will look like. There's typically, again, at this time of year, there's a move-up day where the eighth graders usually walk over to the high school and get a chance to see where they're going and what they're doing. This year, there will be an informational video that's put together, but it will contain all the same information they would have gotten from move-up day. It's going to include a virtual tour of the school, an overview of freshman academy. Ms. Ferrara is the assistant principal that's in charge of the freshman academy. She'll review some of those things. There'll be an introduction to Mrs. Taylor and then a description of their class and team setup in freshman academy and what that would look like. They're planning a student-led orientation in August, again, in person if permitted. But if not, it would be conducted virtual. In the meantime, there are transmission, transition meetings that are ongoing with our grade eight teachers and counselors. Those are comprehensive and really meant to take a deep look at where were students on March 12th? Where are students during this closure? Who will we need to reach out to at the beginning of the year? So a great amount of effort is being put into making sure as we transition our students that someone knows, you know, how they've been doing and what to look out for as they move up to the high school. Summer success, as you know, is a program that often is really valuable to some of our more vulnerable high school students as they move up to the high school. We hope to be able to run our summer success program. Again, we're awaiting guidels from the governor and the commissioner on what summer program may or may not look like before we put out a plan of what that would be. I do know that one thing that Ms. Ferrara said to me today was that we typically hold that earlier in the year. We probably will push that back later in the summer in hopes that we can make it an experience that can be more in person. And then finally, again, at the high school, if there are any new families that have moved to Beverly or any students that are coming from another private school and they're looking to register at the high school, we are open for business and we want to welcome you, but it would be by appointment only at the high school. And then in terms of underclassmen events, there are a number of events that are planned for underclassmen and for the whole school. Our spring concert is going to be a virtual event. I can only tell you kudos to our amazing performing arts staff and those of us who have been to the spring concert and can't figure out how they get that many children on a stage at one time. I think I can't wait to see honestly what they do with the virtual event. I know that they've worked really hard with technology and learning how to utilize some of the digital opportunities that are out there, and they are pretty amazing. So I do look forward to the spring concert. The plan is to conduct a virtual National Honor Society induction as well as to hold the underclass awards in a virtual manner. So more to come on those events. And then finally, I know we've all spent a lot of time thinking about and hearing a lot about the senior events. I'm going to outline for you what we have planned and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. So as you know, the guidance for the graduation, or you may not know, came out on May 21st from the commissioner. It was based on the guidance from the governor and the CDC. And the commissioner was quite clear about what could and couldn't be held. And there's a timestamp of July 19th. So what we can do prior to July 19th and what we can do after July 19th, there's a great distinction. We looked very closely. We conducted a student survey. We asked students, what are the elements of graduation that you're most looking forward to? And how can we devise a way to preserve those elements as best we can? We've worked very hard to try to come up with a plan that will feel as if we're, as a strong celebration for these students. There's just no way that we can replicate for everyone that experience that I know everyone was hoping for and had always envisioned. However, we hope we've come up with something that works really well. We've met with our student leaders and some student members of the senior class to talk about it. And they seemed pretty excited when they heard all of the details of what it would actually look like. I think there were some fears in the beginning that it was going to be in the parking lot and nobody could envision what that was going to look like. But what we have planned is to replicate the stage from Heard Stadium, complete with backdrop and flowers and, you know, all of the things that we typically do. That stage will be located in front of the, we call it, I'll call it the cafeteria entrance, the auditorium entrance on the side of the Beverly High School. We have a beautiful, beautiful building that will serve as the backdrop for this. And the students will be invited in groups. We think that it's approximately 35 or 40 students at a time and they will be asked to arrive. And the cars will pull in. Students will be invited out of their car with their family, one set of students at a time. They will proceed to the stage. The family will be present in front of the stage. Students will have the opportunity to cross the stage, do the moving on of the diploma, the tassel from side to side. They'll receive their diploma. They will have opportunities for photos, all done with social distancing. But at least they will have that opportunity to cross the stage. This will be all recorded by BevCam. And so all of the students will proceed through this. The student speakers, the guest speakers will all be recorded by BevCam in the BevCam studio. And then we have an intern who's working with us for Monsterat, who is going to help us put all of that, I'm sorry, that's for the other thing. These will all be compiled together, I think by BevCam, into a one video so that they will all be put together into what will hopefully be about a two-hour video where everyone can see and enjoy everyone else's opportunity to graduate. So that's our plan for June 7th. We hope to get, I know that some families are anxious to find out what time slots they might be given so they can make their plans accordingly for whether they're going to have cookout celebrations or whatever's allowed within the restrictions of social distancing for families. And so we'll be getting that information out to them soon. And here are the other student, senior events that have been planned. I hope that you've had the chance to drive down Cabot Street and see the class of 2020 banners that have been displayed, both on Cabot Street and in the front of the school. The senior awards, it actually are posted now. I thought it was tomorrow, but they're actually, I heard, I think, posted now on the school website. Parents were notified by letter of their students being, receiving an award and the video is available on the website. Baccalaureate will be held virtually as well. We're creating a video that will be released on the website on June 2nd. That's where the Monsterat animation student intern is contributing, sorry. And the video will include teacher tributes, student tributes and a photo montage. We have a lawn sign delivery tomorrow morning. I know that because I'm actually involved in some of it, so I'm super excited about that. The lawn signs were ordered and we partnered, we had a community partner, the Institute for Savings, who paid for the lawn signs. Students' photos are on the signs and they're going to be delivered directly to their homes tomorrow morning by faculty. And we're all really looking forward to that opportunity. In terms of scholarships, our scholarships will be published on the website on terms of scholarships, our scholarships will be published on the website on June 3rd. Letters will be mailed to the students and families. This was an area that we spent an awful lot of time thinking about how we would do that. Any of you who have attended Scholarship Night, which usually runs from about 6:00 PM till about 10:00 PM, involves over 100 very generous scholarship, eight, you know, people who are providing scholarships to our students, you know, we didn't really feel there was a way to put that together virtually. And so what we have done is we're going to notify students and families of receiving their scholarships, and we're going to publish the running list of who received what scholarship on June 3rd on the website. We have a rolling rally planned for June 5th, which is getting bigger and bigger by the minute. I'm super excited about that. Our seniors will be honored by teachers and staff from across the district. The high school teachers were really the impetus behind this in the beginning, wanting to have an opportunity to honor the students. It has spread. So now we we I think there's even a friendly competition going on among among elementary teachers as to how they're going to be able to go and see the students, but it will be a very festive occasion. The students are going to stage a report to the Beverly Middle School parking lot on that Friday morning. Hopefully, they're they'll have their cars decorated. And when we are going to encourage them to put signs so we have their names on them. And then there is going to be a rolling rally that is led by our police and fire from BMS over to the high school campus, where the staff will be all over the campus socially distanced, and and there to greet and welcome and cheer on and celebrate with the seniors. I've heard from more teachers how excited they are to be able to see some of the kids that they haven't seen in a few years. So hopefully, it will be a really nice event. A couple of other activities that are planned, you know, again, if possible, late July, early August. One of the things the seniors identified in their survey was that they really wanted the opportunity to get back in the building just that one more time, walk through their schedule, see their teachers. So we're hoping to have a senior schedule walkthrough day late July, early August. And then finally, and this is, you know, again, we we hope we'll be able to do this, if possible, if the conditions allow, we hope to be able to have a senior celebration, which in in large part will be a reenactment of the graduation with a full pomp and circumstance playing and the opportunity to for students in their caps and gowns to process in and cross the stage, have their name read. A great opportunity, hopefully, for our senior speakers to give their speeches live and and share the moment with their classmates. So again, that that will happen late July, early August. And again, I think, you know, it's challenging. We hate to dangle all of these things and always say if possible, if possible. But I think we all know that we're not going to be able to do anything if the conditions don't allow us to. So that's just a summary. I thought it would be nice to kind of go from elementary all the way to high school so everybody had the opportunity to know what it is that we've been planning and what we're offering for our kids. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been doing that a lot this week, so I'm well-practiced at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions from anybody.
Okay, looking for hands. Do any committee members have questions for Dr. Trocheck? I saw Ms. Ferretti first.
Thank you. I just more of some feedback. I have both a fourth grader and an eighth grader among my four kids and all the things that has been going on. I think that the kids, you know, they're more resilient than the parents, and they've been rolling with this a lot better than than most parents. But they're, all this is so unexpected, and I know they've been so happy with everything that they've been seeing, all the information. Today, my fourth grader got a lawn sign congratulating him from moving on from Cove. And that, you know, just everything that's been going on has been so special. And and I know it's so much work, and there's a lot of what-ifs and challenges. But I just want to say thank you, you know, both as someone on the school committee team, but also as a parent. I think it's great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferretti. Ms. Biznick, I saw your hand as well.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, one of your slides said weather permitting. So what's the what's the backup plan? Because as you, as you know, we always have a backup plan for what we would have done at Heard Stadium.
Right.
So that wasn't on.
Weather permitting for which thing, graduation?
For our high school graduation.
June 7th graduation. Yep. So it will move the stage inside, and and it will, you know, I mean, certainly, we'll we'll continue to have the ceremony, and we'll do it, and they'll have the opportunity, and families will come with them. But, you know, we're in terms of the plan, it would be to still have it that day, but we would move the venue inside.
Okay.
Sorry, we'd like to avoid that. We're praying for good. So just everyone, we need extra fingers crossed, toes crossed for a really nice day on June 7th.
I'll do my best.
Ms. Biznick, a second question?
I do have a few more. Dr. Trocheck, in years past, and last year being the first year that all five elementary schools did it, there was a clapout for the seniors in their, like, home elementary school. So do you do you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
Not using the right words, right?
Just so you know, it's my favorite event. It was my.
Exactly.
Honestly, it could be one of my favorite events.
So so was there a discussion about trying to incorporate that in any way, shape, or form?
There is discussion. I'm not sure quite how that works and and where we're at. We had conversation first with some PTO presidents at one point in time. We also had some discussion at our leadership meeting with some of the elementary principals. I'm not really, I I do know that the rolling rally idea has really caught on, and and the teachers were all planning on heading to the high school. And so I'm not sure how that will impact or or shift or change. But I do know that it's something that people are thinking about. I don't have any more definitive information on that right now. But, you know, certainly, I know, I know that it's very cool and one of a very beloved tradition. So I'm not sure how we'll be able to manage that or what we'll do. But we certainly have it on the radar. I can tell you that.
Ms. Biznick, one more question, then we'll see if anyone else has, and then you can finish your list.
Sure. Thank you. You put up a slide about the transition presentations.
Yes.
For.
Yes, for elementary, fourth to fifth.
Can we, though, that, your slide presentation was not in our packet. So can we advertise that? Can we broadcast those?
Absolutely. Those dates were actually finalized this afternoon, which is why, so here they are right here. I've I'm sharing it up again. And we will absolutely, I know that there's a, I think, whether it's connected, whether it's through the, you know, whatever mediums they are sending that word out, airs in Centerville on June 3rd, and Hannah in North Beverly on June 8th. And those are, you know, obviously, virtual Google meets that, you know, everyone will be invited to.
Thanks. I just want to check with other committee members. Do I see any other hands? If not, we'll let Ms. Biznick continue with her list. Okay, Ms. Biznick, go ahead.
Thank you. I I want to know, Dr. Trocheck and or Mayor Cahill, if there, if one of you can speak to some of the emails, I believe that we all that we all received, yeah, quite a box full this week, mentioned city involvement. They mentioned a city parade. I don't have a senior this year. Maybe I'm happy about that. I don't have a senior in high school this year, I should say. But if you can speak to perhaps some of the emails that we saw that that spoke about the city involvement relative to graduation versus the quote-unquote "schools involvement," and if there has been kind of any, I don't know, I don't want to use the word cooperation.
Yeah.
Because that sounds rude, right?
There was no cooperation. I'm happy to speak to that. I will say that, you know, we, the, there were a group of parents who approached the mayor for a car parade unbeknownst to us. So they never contacted me, and they never contacted Mrs. Taylor. And so the mayor, you know, after hearing that, contacted us. And we were like, well, we already have a rolling rally planned. So we've already, we had already, you know, started that. And that was generated from the teacher level for something that was already being in the works for planning. So, you know, I think it was a bit of a miscommunication, you know, signals crossed, and that, you know, we, we, there was, no one contacted us to talk about having any different kind of parade. So we, you know, we had already begun our, and I think we kind of in in thinking about it, and and the mayor and I spent some time, you know, talking about it. And, you know, I mean, he reached out to us immediately after hearing from that group of people and worked on, you know, we tried to think of what a compromise would be. Our rolling rally is on the campus of the school. However, we've sort of expanded, thinking in thinking about how do we get all the cars ready, we realized, well, if they staged at the middle school, they could then, there'd be some driving through some of the streets, and there'll be some time that they'll be on either. And I'm not exactly sure of the exact route we're working. I think it'll be either Bolsh to Cabot to, what's the one?
Carrick.
Carrick to Sawyer, to into the front of the front of the building, or actually, in thinking today, I was thinking about it, they really should go around the back of the middle school and out onto Cabot, because then we'll have a one-way in and a one-way out, rather than two people trying to get in and out of one, one driveway over there on the middle school. But we're working with police and fire to kind of help us with that. I have been working with some parents and and reached out to them and asked them to help us on the front end over at the middle school and along the route. And as well as Mr. Kader will sort of be on site at the middle school orchestrating what the seniors are doing and getting them in line and getting them to go. So I'm actually more worried about how many teachers are showing up at the high school, because I think we're going to have a big crowd. Dr. Flaherty was listening to me today, saying, how are we going to get them all there? They're not going to all fit. But it's a big campus. And so we're really, we, the model that we took came from PBID. It's a model that PBID did on Friday at PBID High School. And so, and I think a couple of the other communities around us have done a similar type of thing. So we're super excited about it. I think it's going to be great for the kids and for the parents and for everybody. So Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to speak more.
Yes, please. I'll add to that. Look, nothing has changed about the virus, except that we've managed to flatten the curve. So events that can't be done without successfully physically distancing from each other are still problematic. So.
Now, I don't, I.
Well, I'm just getting started, please. So so listen, I spoke with the parents, and believe me, I mean, it was a great conversation, and I understand exactly what their desire is. And, you know, and and I believe that this event is going to be wonderful. I really do. I think it's important that it stage one place and come to the high school from there, because it allows for a bit of a route off-campus in addition to being on-campus. You know, the the logistically, the the teachers are going to need to be able to to distance in their arrival and their, as they spread out. The students, the seniors are going to need to be able to distance as they as they stage and as they come through. You know, there, there, we're going to make sure that there's police, a police escort. So to that will be, you know, there will be some details, because we're going to need to to lead the procession and make sure that traffic, as it needs to be, to be held, is is held. We're going to make sure that we have a fire detail so that we can have a dedicated truck. So and any costs that accrue from those, we'll handle out of my budget. And to the extent that anyone on duty can be part of it, you know, we may have additional police and fire presence, and that's our hope. So there's that. I I led with the with the fact that we we still have to be cognizant of the virus, because much as I would, I, you know, I said to the parents, look, I want to say yes to everything. I do. You know, I mean, the, I really feel for the kids, and, you know, who doesn't want to say yes wherever you can to, you know, to celebrating them. But the reality is that there was no Memorial Day parade. There can't be Fourth of July parades. Parades are not allowed right now. And so, and I don't know when that will change. But, you know, the the thought, there are so many celebrations and events that we're used to, that the way that we traditionally do them, you know, they're all about gathering people closely in spaces and and celebrating. And so it's not really possible right now. So, you know, I'm happy to to have a conversation and answer a question or two. I didn't really mean to interrupt you, Mrs. Biznick, because I just wanted to make sure I kind of got my thought out. So so that that's what I'm thinking. I'm excited at the way it's set up. I'm excited to participate in it. You know, my, my, my hope is to go over and stand and be part of the the folks who, you know, celebrate. I would imagine that, that, you know, some of you also want to try to do that if you can. But I I think it can be, and I hope it will be, a really wonderful and positive experience for the seniors. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't, John wants a turn. I would ask to come back.
Thank you. Mr. Malady, please.
Sure. I just wanted to say that I think that, well, to comment on something, the mayor said that I I agree about, you know, the spacing, and and nothing has changed about the virus at all. It's just that the weather is nicer. And I think a lot of people have hit fatigue. I know, like, in my own family, my mom spent several weeks working on a COVID floor at her hospital, and she's kind of like itching right now. She went from waking up in the overnight and washing down the coffee pot handle to wanting to venture out and go to the beach and try to reclaim some sort of normalcy back. I I think that from several of the conversations I had today with the people who were kind enough to leave their phone numbers and their emails, you know, that there, some of their complaints and some of their criticisms are incredibly valid and grounded. And it's not really necessarily about trying to recreate a graduation ceremony, but it's about how in their perception, and oftentimes perception is reality, there was a breakdown in communication between members of the school administration and the parents of and the parents and the students of that class. And I don't want this to become, you know, any sort of back-and-forth or debate. But that is how they felt. And if you, you know, watch CBS Sunday Morning or certain, you know, local programs, you know, there are stories of, you know, towns and communities that have done a better job than we'd have in celebrating their kids. And I'm saying "we" because if a student gets recognized for a scholarship or award, and we recognize them at a school committee meeting, we all stand up and we take our picture with that kid. So I think it's fair to say that if we're going to get some of that praise and recognition for someone's achievements, that we we also should take some of the ownership for some of this disappointment. Something that's grounded is the signs. I think it's fantastic that the signs are being delivered, but it's May 29th. A lot of these communities and nearby areas have delivered those signs earlier. And that's just one, one example. We obviously can't, you know, undo some of the hurt feelings that these kids and the parents have. I really liked the presentation that Dr. Trocheck just gave. It sounds like we're doing the best that we can at this point. But, you know, in terms of trying to, you know, overcome some of the hurt feelings and disappointment, we're never going to be able to do. But I do wanted to, you know, take the time because we're on camera, and in case one person's watching, is that, you know, we got your emails, and we heard them. And, you know, in our position in the school committee, you know, we can't dictate, you know, what certain things are going to look like. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Real quickly, are there other members that wish to speak? Otherwise, we'll give the floor back to Ms. Biznick. Ms. Quilo, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. My questions were for Dr. Trocheck. They were just some stuff for the end-of-the-year items. I had a couple constituents ask about iPad turn-ins for the end of the year. And then to piggyback on that, if their children are children that ones that were lacking with some of their work, and they still probably have another month of work to do after school ends, will they be able to keep their iPads throughout the summer to still continue with their work? One of them is a special needs child as well. And then an eighth-grade parent whose child is going to be a freshman, how will the new laptop registration and pickup work as well?
Those are great questions. Thank you. In terms of the iPad pickup, those details will be coming, partially because we're still thinking about some of the options that are available. I will say that eighth graders will absolutely be turning in their iPads. And that will be part of the information that comes from the, from Mr. Poska when he sends out that information, I think, about student belongings and the day that they put that all together. I think we're still thinking about grades five, six, and seven, what the right way to do it, and how best to manage the devices and what can be done remotely and what would need to be done physically in person. So there's more information to come on that. In terms of summer learning that you're talking about, the extended summer learning, we do know that we're negotiating right now with many of our providers to make sure our licenses stay open for some of the things that they're doing. Dr. Flaherty, did you want to jump in?
I just wanted to add in that we we are planning and started discussions today to make sure that our choice boards go up for all grades, and those will stay active for parents to be able to. be able to access all summer.
So, so we're in the midst of planning for summer and what summer programming may or may not look like, what will be available and what will be accessible, we're really trying, hoping that many of the enrichment activities and many of the, like, licensure programs that we have will remain open on the Beverly keeps learning site for students to access, as well as, and I think you alluded particularly to some of the students with some unfinished learning and some of the gaps that we want to do, and what opportunities will be available for them over summer. We're waiting, again, I know everyone's tired of me saying it, for guidance from the Department of Ed as to what summer can look like, what we will be allowed to do and what we won't be allowed to do in terms of providing summer services, and then in terms of anyone that's a special ed student on an IEP, Ms. Spansky's been working in terms of the extended year programming for students that have that in their IEP, and we're again waiting guidance, I believe it's, and Ms. Spansky, I don't know if it's, if it's definitive yet that it will be remote services for us, or if we're still waiting for guidance on some of that, so I'm going to actually flip it over to you again for that question.
So we are still awaiting further guidance, at this point we've been instructed to plan for remote learning with the possibility of some small amounts of in-person instruction if it is permissible, so we're moving forward with our plan for remote learning, and then if we can, you know, provide some direct instruction, we'll look at our availability to do that.
And I believe that you're going ahead with staff and staffing that summer program in the way that you would need to do that, right?
Correct, yep.
Did I, and in terms of the laptop program, the information is being distributed for, so we will be opening, I think, up that registration process, I think June 1, I would have to double-check with Judy Miller, I know that she has been working on that, we have, you know, as you know, it's a lease program, and so there's a, there's a whole process, I think that they've devised a way to do most of that virtually so that it would be all online, and then the distributions of the laptops, again, would happen in late August, so. The question is, what do we do, we need to collect back the iPads because we need to redistribute them, what the timing on that would look like, you know, I think we're still in the planning stages for some of that.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo, did you have a follow-on?
I did have one more thing, so in regards to the virtual learning and the iPads, I did speak with Ms. Fitzpatrick today about the opportunities program, and she said whether it's in-person or not, that it would, they would still be able to do it virtually, so what about those children with their remote access?
Exactly.
Opportunities.
Right, so that's, that's the conversation about who would need to keep iPads, how we would, you know, what we would need to be doing in terms of all of those things, so that's the ongoing discussion that we have right now. One of the things that we need to do as we think about it is get, is make sure that we can, you know, typically over the summer, we're providing updates to the devices where, you know, doing maintenance on some of them and what can be done virtually and remotely and what can't, so what, what that timeline for when we need to get access to those devices is still in discussion, but it is something that we're looking at very closely to make sure, and certainly if they have an IEP that has extended your services, they would need to keep that device with them and through, throughout that whole program.
Ms. Visnick, do you have another question?
I do, thank you, Madam President, first I want to say, I really like Ms. Spansky's background, her virtual background, very nice.
Thank you.
So, I guess, as, as an elected official, as someone who has been put in my chair by others that I'm supposed to represent, I feel that I need to ask, we don't normally get very many emails, we don't normally get very many people at our meetings, and, and we were hit with quite a wave of unhappiness, and to John's point, to Mr. Malady's point about people feeling not good, I wonder if you can speak to, one of the big things I thought I read, kind of as a theme across many of those emails, was the desire to possibly delay, or, you know, to delay things in hopes that there would be, we'd be in a better time, because as Mayor Cahill says, nothing has changed, and we need only watched the news last night to realize that, you know, people are wicked antsy, and they're out and about and they're, they're not adhering to the guidelines.
Yeah, so, in particular, the, so, you know, when we were looking at all of the options, and, you know, there was a team at the, at the high school who, they examined probably five or six different iterations of what we could do, from a virtual graduation, which some communities around us have done, to, on one end of the spectrum, to the various iterations of what, you know, what we could safely do, given the restrictions that we have, how do we incorporate a facility that we have, and that's sort of where we landed on the June 7 celebration that we have planned so far, to how, if we were to wait until August and try to do a, the full, well, if you look at the guidance, it's not the full, it's actually still a modified version of in-person graduation, and, and so there were a number of factors that we weighed, and in the end, we landed on the one that was sort of the in-between hybrid of, you know, not totally virtual, at the end you end up with your virtual celebration, but at least you have that in-person opportunity to cross the stage. We do have a number of students in our district who are either entering into military service or entering into the workforce or heading out, and so conferring the diplomas for us, we felt, you know, was important, and, you know, there were equal number of people who raised that as they, they felt like that June 7 is the graduation date, and that was their preference, right, to have, to receive their diplomas on June 7 and not defer. We thought we compromised pretty well with our opportunity for a reenactment of the ceremony at the end of July or early August, so I will concur that perhaps the communication could have been much improved, that would have maybe eased some of the tensions that arose, however, I believe that it was done with good intention, I don't think we wanted to dangle the hope that we were going to be able to do something later until we had a little better understanding about what we would be able to do. The guidance from the commissioner did not come out until May 21st, some communities that announced early what they were going to do had to pivot and take back some of the things that they said, so I believe that they were erring on the side of caution in terms of waiting until they had the full picture of what would be allowed to make that final decision about when it might be the right time. You know, in terms of the emails, I responded to each email, I put out the opportunity to speak with each one of the parents, I, I think one of the things that's the most difficult is, as a parent myself, I understand, when your kid hurts, you hurt, and I think that there are a lot of people who are feeling, you know, this hopelessness and loss that they can't, they don't have the level of control that they're typically used to having, and so it's a, it's a process, and I think, you know, I'm hoping that I'm accepting from all of the people and the feedback that I'm getting around me, how can we make sure that we're communicating in a way that everyone understands what we're planning as we move forward, we've really stepped up efforts, I've encouraged the high school to do the same, I've done the same, you know, maybe it's the naivety of a first-year superintendent and that's the luck of the draw that Beverly got, that you had someone who hadn't done this before, not that anyone's ever done this before, but, you know, I'm, I'll accept that responsibility around some of that communication, but I do, I don't think that anyone at any point intentionally set out to upset or make anyone more anxious than they needed to be. You know, our, our high school administrative team is second to none, they are great, they are organized, they are really doing what they feel is in the best interest of kids, I would be remiss if I didn't take at least an opportunity to defend them at some level to some of the accusations that were thrown around in some of those emails, there, there's not anyone who's trying to take an easy way out or check something off of a checklist or act in a way because they just don't feel like doing anything more and, and, you know, that's sort of a very unfair categorization of the team that's over there, that's working extremely hard every minute of every day, trying to do what's right for kids, so, you know, for those parents who are upset, I feel for them, I've expressed to them, I understand as a parent what it feels like when some of the kids don't get, you know, they've thought about this for a long time, I talked to one parent, it was her third child, and so for the last two out of three years, they watched their siblings cross the stage, and that is excruciating, all they thought about was their opportunity to cross the stage, my heart breaks for them. When I met with the students, you know, I was very clear, and, you know, we have some of the most articulate students around, Kevin Picardo and Sophia, they had, they expressed to us what they were looking for and what they were hoping for, and, you know, I believe they understand that the administration's working to try to maintain a safe and effective situation for them, it's terrible, no one can, you know, no one can undo what we're living in, and yet I think as the responsible adults, we have to be the ones that say, you know, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry for your loss, I'm sorry for your hurt, I'm sorry for your disappointment, however, it's our responsibility to keep you safe, it's our responsibility to comply with the governor and the CDC and the mayor and the fire chief and the police chief, and everybody dictates are the rules that we have to operate under," and so we're doing the, I promise you, there's no one that doesn't care about these kids and that is trying to do anything in any way but in the best interest of these kids, and so, you know, again, my apologies to anyone for your, you know, the distress that was caused by the emails, most importantly, I don't like that our parent, you know, I like to look at myself as a partner with our parents in this community and the education of their child, and I am totally distressed that there are people who don't think that we have their best interest or their child's best interest, and that, you know, anytime you crack the trust between parents and the school administration, that's a problem, and so we have to look at how we address it and what we do, but, but believe me, there's, there's not, there was no one that set out to upset anyone or to hurt anyone or to dismiss anyone, and I mean, in terms of the timely delivery of the signs, graduation's still a week away, senior week was going to be next week, internships would have just ended, so I believe that the administration sort of thought, "We're going to kind of look at what that timeline for senior week would look like and try to organize these events around when they would normally occur." So, you know, the delivery of the signs, the teachers have been planning, you know, first it was going to be a surprise, apparently that wasn't, it was silly of us to think that we would surprise seniors in any way, right, so they're pretty savvy out there, so special delivery didn't fool anyone, I guess, but, you know, I mean, we're looking, we're looking, we just want to celebrate with them, it is, it is, I quite don't know what else to say, I guess that's about it, as much as I can say to you right now, I mean, I don't think that there was any intent to do anything but what's best by all our kids, so, you know, my apologies, you know, certainly we're all working and we look at everything that happens and we learn from it, I said, through this whole remote learning plan, you know, it was an emergency situation, not an intentional and purposeful planned-out opportunity to do what we may have done if we had more time, right, so, again, lessons learned, we understand, take the good, the good successes with the barriers and challenges that we faced and learn from them and hopefully move forward as we go, and hopefully we'll don't have to do that, I have said, and I don't want to end on a down note, but my heart breaks for the seniors and what they're suffering, my heart is breaking even more for our rising seniors, because I'm not quite sure what their senior year is going to look like, and so hopefully we're going to learn from these things and maybe communication will be better improved for that class, so that that will be one area that we grew from, you know, from what happened, and we'll be able to kind of maybe help them navigate a very difficult situation, and we'll be more prepared to do that than we were for this group, so.
Thank you, Dr. Trocheck. I don't know if we have any other questions on this topic, I do have just a quick update from the chair, if we can move forward. I just wanted to call attention to our June calendar, believe it or not, we're entering June over the weekend, and we have on our calendar the negotiation subcommittee meetings on Monday, June 1, as well as a meeting with the association on Wednesday, June 3. June is a funny month, we had actually put our SISL meeting on June 10, so the second Wednesday, so to speak, of June, and then our regular school committee, for which we do have a few agenda items, including some recognitions and whatnot, will be on June 17, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear on everyone's calendar that we'll have our next regular meeting on June 17. That is also a tentative date for another negotiations meeting. Mayor Cahill, I see your hand, I was going to say that we'll also be seeing a lot of city council activity, I don't know if that's what you wanted to call any attention to or if you had something else.
No, no, that's, that's spot on, yeah, just that, once we submit the budget to the council, they'll set their, their hearings and one of their evenings will be dedicated to the school budget, so we should make sure that they don't schedule that on the 17th, I would say, huh?
Yes, yeah, we're double booked, we're double booked that day already, I think we have a six-hour span for some of us, thank you. So with that, we had an agenda item for executive session, but we don't have any new information on these topics, and so we will forego that. Were there any other dates, reminders, or updates that we needed to make before we take a motion to adjourn this evening?
Madam Chair, can you repeat what's happening on the 3rd?
Sure, on June 3, the negotiation subcommittee is having its meeting with the Beverly Teachers Association.
Okay, thank you.
So we have two posted meetings for the negotiating subcommittee meeting, also, you know, as Dr. Trocheck presented, there's a lot of activities that, we'll try to get a consolidated list out, you know, I think that rolling rally might be an opportunity if we socially distance to support our teachers and students as well, if our calendars allow us during the day, and certainly we'll make sure that we're just really clear on who's where in June, because it's snuck up on us for certain. Cahill, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Quelo, and we need to exit with a roll call vote, Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
John Malady?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Larinda Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes, that's a vote of seven to zero, we are now adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.